Good evening. I'd like to call a Lawrence City Council meeting to order. Today's Tuesday, May 7th. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Counsel Vasquez.
Present.
Counsel Plant. Counsel Tumi.
Here.
Counsel Reyes.
Present.
Counsel Ramonte.
Here.
Counsel Kino.
Present.
Counsel Bruno.
Present.
Counsel Vice President Rivera.
Present.
And Counsel President Moran.
Here. Please rise for a moment of silence. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor, first item on the agenda is your step into the minute for April 16th. Any motion to approve? So move.
Second.
And discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is party participation. Participant, you have two and a half minutes to state your comments. After two minutes, the bell will ring. You have 30 seconds to wrap up your comments. Please address the city council as a whole, not as individuals. First participant, H. Mali. Name and address for the record, please, Mr. Mali.
Homaian Mali, 53 Chester Street. Good evening, honorable members of the Lawrence City Council. In this exciting election year of 2013, our citizens can see how our city is moving forward with Honorable Mayor Lantigo. In this important election year, we as the citizens demand support of our police department and their union. With the leadership of Honorable Chief Romeo, the crime rate declined 19 percent, auto theft 33 percent, demand support of their union, do not touch their budget. Community policing and crime prevention unit has helped our city a lot. Our citizens are witnessing that the best performance of our DPW and their leadership. Their upcoming contract, they need your support. Our firefighters are retired contract, we demand support of our firefighters. Honorable Mayor Lantigo worked hard to open new fire station and buy new equipment, support our firefighter brother, Tim Atwood, to get his benefit. Honor of Mayor Lantigo brought to our children the gift of the turnaround plan. Harvard Scholar Superintendent Rally has worked hard to move Lawrence Public School forward. Our teachers must know, three years without any collective bargaining, our citizens are behind them and support their union. We also support our brother and sisters from the union, class members, they are here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next participant, Ellie Curtin. Ellie Curtin. Name and address for the record, please, Ellie.
Ellie Curtin, Bolus, 198 Essex Street. Parking, it's worse than a disease in Lawrence. And us people at Brunswick House are being discriminated by daycare that rents over there. They have three signs up, no parking from 7:00 to 10:00, another sign, no parking 7:00 to 10:00, and two parkings, no parking 2:00 to 4:00. Why are they doing that to us? We live there, we pay rent there. We can't park there? That's for their buses, the daycare. They come there and play and eat and have fun and go home. At least invite us from Brunswick Yikes to go to the daycare without taking our parking spaces away. And then you people gave us sticker parking on Jackson Street. It's not working. The Lawrence housing parks, all their trucks on one side of Jackson Street, so we only have four parking spaces for sticker parking. Four for 71 apartments, that's not a good average. And, what else? And also on the sticker parking, they tell us that the police station, the people that park there have to live there. We wanted it for our visiting. My son and the people's families, there's no place for them to park. Museum Square in back of our building, there's 15 cars parked there every morning, every night, all weekend. Not one, no parking sign. And it's not an elderly housing, it's young people over there. The elderly got the, all the parking, no parking signs. It's not fair. It's discriminating towards them, I don't know why. Those parking signs are there for the daycare. Why should they have parking and we don't? We're elderly and we live there. We pay rent every month. Is that because we live in low family rent that we have to be treated like peasants? It's not fair. This is America. We did away with that discrimination in Mississippi and Alabama years ago, so why is it coming up here to us? Thank you.
Thank you. Next participant, Jamie Melendez. Mr. Melendez, name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Jamie Melendez, 27 Drakkar Street, Director of Veteran Services. Good evening, council members. Basically, I'm here today just to ask for your support for our 11th Annual Beautification Day, which falls on the 18th of May. It will be happening from 9:00 a.m. to noon. And again, it's all in preparation, in preparation for our Memorial Day services, which will happen a week later on the 27th of May at Bellevue Cemetery. This event is sponsored by Veteran Services of Lawrence, Veteran Services of Methuen, and Bellevue and St. Mary's Cemeteries. It's a great event. We had a great turnout last year. Had about 250 people. We changed out all the flags, cleaned up the cemetery, and we were able to provide a small lunch afterwards and a closing ceremony for the disposal of the flags. I'm here today to ask you to just inform your constituents, if you have to, please go ahead and reproduce my flyers and get them out there. Let your constituents know that they're more than welcome to come out and be a part of it. Personally, on a personal level, I really enjoyed the fact last year that I had a lot of children out there in youth. I was able to inform them on why we do Memorial Day, why we do the beautification, and what it's all about. So again, I'm just here to ask for your support on this day and get the word out.
Thank you, Jamie. Can you do me a favor, Jamie? Can you email me this?
I sure can, sir.
Information so we can put her on Channel 22?
I sure can, yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Counsel President, that's ours on the city's website as well.
Sure. Oh, it's already on the city website? Oh, excellent. Next participant, Dick Russell.
Good evening, counselors. Dick Russell, 34 Cross Street. I gotta wing it. My printer broke down, so I don't have my fancy thing. I got this from somebody on Facebook about the last special election. This woman complained that she went to vote at the Pathanum School. There were six spots, two of which were handicapped, and all were taken by pole slash cops. Now, this is her wording, because the same cars were there when I left as when I voted, and I was the only one in District A1 and A2 that voted at the time. I have a handicap placard, and I had to park far away and take several rest to the school. Even the handicap spots in the schoolyard are taken, that are taken, are too far away from the handicapped entrance. School was out for more than an hour because I was there at 4-ish, and the barricades were still up, the rest of the parking lot was empty but inaccessible. That's the first thing off of Facebook. I got friended on Facebook. We all know who friended on Facebook was. You know who friended me? Tom Sapienza. What's the story with Tom Sapienza? Is he in limbo? It's been six months since he was fired. While I think of him, what's the story with Tim Atwood? What's going on with him? We haven't heard a word about either one of them. It's election year. Are you guys gonna jump on the ball or is this gonna be buried? Okay. I saw on the agenda that you were gonna be selling off some excess surplus city property, and then there's some other stuff that's gonna be discussed. Past experience shows that all the city property is sold off at a dollar a square foot. How come my property, 2,350 square feet over on Cross Street, is assessed for somewhere around $40,000? Let's see. That's what, about 20 times more than what it should be. I mean, if you're selling off property at a buck a square foot. Now, the last thing, the budget rant. I know in what, two weeks, the mayor's gonna be sending his wish list down to you people, and then from there, it's gonna go to Counsel Rivera, where it's gonna go through the Budget Finance Committee. And then, what, a week or two weeks before the end of June, we will have a public hearing. We will present it to the council, and there'll be a public hearing. Now, I asked this question. Why do you guys even bother with a public hearing? I happened to stumble on my comments from last year. I don't think anything was ever done about any of them. I think that you could probably take my comments from last year and you could apply them to this year's budget. You know, why waste our time if we're gonna be ignored? Thank you.
Thank you. Next participant, Kathy Runch. Name and address for the record, please, Kathy.
Kathy Range, 32 Drakkar Street. Good evening. School receiver Riley has deemed it necessary to have a $6 million increase in salaries at the central office. Where's all that money going? The people of Lawrence and the state who are supporting this school system deserve to know, you know, what salaries, what increases in salaries, what new positions we're getting here in the central office. I mean, $6 million, that could be 100 new $60,000 a year jobs, or 50 new $60,000 a year jobs and 130,000 a year raises. Who's getting this money? I mean, at the very least, we should have some transparency here and know where this money is getting spent. Is this putting the school system on a course to get out of receivership? I doubt it. Pretty soon, the federal government won't have enough money to run this school system. The only body that has a chance of getting this information is the city council. And I was thinking, you should possibly, you should hold up approval of the budget until we get to see where this money's going. Thank you.
Thank you. Next participant, Louis Rios. Name and address for the record, please, Louis.
Louis Rios, 14 Cedar Street. I'm here with the Phantom Knights for the diabetes awareness, and we just wanted to see how you guys can help us spread the news and everything. We're doing awareness for diabetes. The Jocelyn Diabetes Centers are sponsored from Boston. They will be there that day, and we're just trying to spread the news on diabetes.
Spread, oh, okay. Now, I thought I saw your name on the, do you have something on the agenda?
Yes.
Louis Rios.
It's under New Business, 12113.
Oh, Louis, this document is going down to the ordinance committee on Thursday. Be here on Thursday, 7:00 o'clock.
Thursday, 7:00 o'clock?
That ends party participation. These names will be submitted to the city clerk's office for the history books. Mr. Clerk. Next item on the agenda is Poli Care, document 213, Handicapped Parking, sign and ramp to be built at 38 Warren Street. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document 213 of 2012. Notice hereby giving the city council a hold of public hearing on Tuesday, May 7th, 2013, in council chambers, 200 Carmen Street, at 7:00 p.m. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the advised ordinances to be amended by adding the following paragraph to municipal quality handicap parking. Warren Street, West Side from 1.360 feet, northerly avenue section of Essex Street to 1.380 feet, which should read 380 feet. Printed version says 370 feet, northerly avenue section of Essex Street. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published on Tuesday, April 30th.
Poli Care is now open. Anybody wish to be heard? No, Poli Care is now closed. Counsel, what's your pledge?
Motion to approve.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Second and discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is document 298, National Grid requests permission to place underground electric conduit on Brook Street. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document 298, 2012. Notice is hereby giving the city council a hold of public hearing on Tuesday, May 7th, 2013, in city council chambers, 200 Carmen Street, at 7:00 p.m. The purpose of, excuse me, the purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning a petition presented by or on behalf of National Grid of North Andover requesting the city of Lawrence by its city council members to grant permission to excavate the public highways and to run and maintain underground electrical conduits together with such sustaining protective fixtures as said company may deem necessary in the public way or ways here and after referred to and to make the necessary house connections along the extensions as required in the petition filed by the company dated 12th day of October, 2012. Said underground conduits shall be located substantially in accordance with the plan filed with the petition dated October 11, 2012, and attached to the notice forwarded to a list of abutters provided by the assessors office seven to 10 days prior to this hearing.
Poli Care, Poli Care is now open. Anybody wish to be heard? Name and address for the record, please.
Michelle Stacy, Representative for National Grid. We're asking to put conduit under the ground from pole 3887 over to the call box, emergency call box. There's a siphon on pole 3887.
Thank you. Anybody else? Name and address for the record, please, Mr. Russell.
Dick Russell, 34 Cross Street. I'm not impacted by any of this, but I thought at one time you people were kind of putting a hold on any work that you were gonna grant National Grid until they showed an improvement in pulling out the dead, the double poles. What's the status on that? Have they pulled on that?
They have. No, we have. This is one particular one. We really need this particular project to go forward because of funding issue.
Did the council vote on putting a hold on the stuff until the double poles were, was?
Still on.
Progressive?
Still on.
Are they, are the stuff, are the poles being removed in a timely manner?
I don't know. I hope so.
And why, why, why is this such an emergency if they can't follow the regulations or stipulations that you people have placed?
Funding issue. We need to make sure that gets done.
Huh?
It's a funding issue. We need to make sure that project gets done.
Okay.
Thank you. Next, anybody else? Poli Care is now closed. Counsel, what's your pledge?
Motion approved.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Discussion.
Discussion. Counsel Ramonte.
Thank you, Counsel President. I just have a question. Is, I see, is Isensi here? Any chance? Because I want to see if Brook Street is one of the streets that we're repaving. If we're gonna repave this street, why repave it and have them?
He's here. John.
Tear it and put this conduit underneath. If you can please come up to the mic. Thank you.
Name and address for the record, please, Mr. Isensi.
John Isensi, 200 Carmen Street.
Thank you. Is Brook Street on one of the streets that we're gonna be repaving?
Brook? I don't believe so.
Okay. Because if they're gonna be tearing it up, but anyways, they're gonna be tearing it up, and is it gonna be on?
Is this the conduit that they want to run from the pole?
Correct.
Into the park?
Yeah.
Now, I know last year they were here, and you guys kind of nixed it for the reason that this gentleman alluded to. However, when you nixed it, you should recall that three years ago, there was a murder in that park, in the basketball court. And so what they're trying to do is put conduit in to make the police call blocks operable.
Okay.
And, and no, when they do come in and do a road cut now, they are using the infrared patching system that improves the patch and doesn't make it look like a water repair.
Yeah, okay. All right. Other questions? Thank you.
Anybody else? Oh, Counsel Bruno.
Thank you, Counsel President. I just wanted to address the concern raised by Mr. Russell, and he raised a very valid point. I just want to, two things. One is, there was never a formal vote of this council that requires us not to pass National Grid items. It's been a policy at the ordinance committee level to try to incentivize National Grid that we weren't gonna pass any of this. But this actually, the only one that benefits from this approval is the city. It's grant money for lighting at a park that we're gonna lose if we don't get this passed now. So we're doing this just for the benefit of the city to allow us to access that grant money, and we are in general holding that policy, which is a policy. It's not a formal vote. We're not violating any rule that we adopted. We just, it's a policy that we've adopted that we've chosen to overlook in this instance because it's gonna jeopardize city grant money if we don't move forward on this particular pole. I just want to make sure he understands why that's coming. But back to the applicant, I just, we've had a strong issue with sidewalks being ripped up and other things, that they're gonna repair the street and any impacted sidewalk to as good or better condition. I just want to verify that with the applicant before we take a final vote.
Yes. They'll, I can have the construction company part of that written for you also, to say that they will do better or the same condition that it was.
Perfect. Okay. Appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Vasquez.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, similar to both the constituent and Counsel Bruno, I think that it's important that we are, it's very important that we are addressing this issue. This is something that I personally have been opposed completely because of the double poles issue. I think that we have to ensure that there's accountability on the, you know, the companies that are doing business with the city. In this case, we're talking specifically about National Grid. I know that it came before the ordinance committee as a special meeting because of the need to move this forward. This has not been done for National Grid, and I want to make sure that it is cleared for everyone, and I'm speaking on my own behalf. The vote that will be taken by Kendris Vasquez tonight is not a vote in favor of National Grid. It is actually a vote in favor of an organization that has been doing tremendous work for the city of Lawrence, and they need this. Otherwise, the grant funding is gonna go away. I'm still gonna be strong when it comes to the double pole situation.
Dave Gendel, you speak today. Dave Gendel should actually be the one that you speak to. When we come here, we only have information on the projects that are going on, so maybe he should come to a meeting with you guys. I don't know how often you speak to him, or, but I will definitely go to his office tomorrow and...
Thank you. And I understand that the city has been working with National Grid in this issue.
Yes.
But I have seen very little result, if none, particularly in my...
There's double poles everywhere, and they are working on it. I know it doesn't seem it, but they, they are working on it.
I personally have gone out in the district. I've counted the double poles, and I remember the day when I was told that there were 99 double poles in the city. Out of those 99, 48 will have been in the Arlington district alone, based on what I counted, which is half.
We also can't remove them until the other parties come off.
And I understand that the whole situation that is going on.
I understand.
But I just want to make it clear that tonight's vote on Kendris' end, it is a vote not in favor of National Grid, but a vote in favor of an organization that has done wonderful job for our city.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counsel Rivera.
Thank you, Counsel President. The request from Counsel Bruno was to make sure that it gets put back into the condition it was or better. Who makes sure that that happens?
We have a construction department. I can find out who that is.
I just want to know who from, who from the city of Lawrence makes sure that that happens?
I don't have that information.
Inspection Services.
No, DPW.
Mr. Isensi, then?
Well, that falls under, Inspection Services, it falls under you?
So is it, is it Inspection Services or is it DPW?
Either one of them is gonna be the ones who go out there, but generally, it's DPW, being Andy Wall, the engineer, to make sure that floatable fill was used or the proper patch was made.
So it would be, it'd be the engineer and DPW?
It would be someone from our department. Generally, the engineer goes out, checks roadway.
So the only reason why I ask is because there is actually a lot of street work going on. So on a street that they did a couple of years ago, there was some cuts on the street, and I'm not sure that any, I don't know what the process is.
We made a concerted effort to crack down on everyone who cuts into our streets now.
So is there like a list right now that shows where, who's cutting into what streets?
We get, we get a fax daily, several faxes daily on who's coming into the city, whether it be the gas company, whether it be National Grid, whether it be an outside agency coming in to do a road cut. They have to notify us when they start.
So you have a running list, you get these facts? Okay. Any chance I can get a copy of that list?
It's a book. Welcome to it.
I know, it's just, just who cut into the most recent, I mean, the last year.
We keep track of them all.
In the last year. Can I get a copy of at least the last years who cut?
Sure.
All right. I just, I get, I...
They just shoot me an email.
I will definitely shoot you an email. I don't want you to, I asked for it only because I think that the best intentions are to get to the stuff, but I know you guys are understaffed, so I just want to make sure that they actually are getting to the stuff, especially to the streets that are fully paved.
There's an awful lot of folks out there watching what goes on. We get an awful lot of calls. We don't, sometimes have to watch. A lot of folks doing it for us.
All right. Thank you.
I mean, I remember about five years ago, Counsel Tumi, we put a piece of ordinance together to make sure that, that we take care of that. And I believe you guys are doing an excellent job so far, just to make sure we keep it up. In terms of sending these double poles out to the full council National Grid permits, this is probably the first one we send out from the ordinance committee.
Six months.
In six months, at least.
And more.
Oh, yeah, probably more. I mean, whoever watches this meeting knows I'm one of the ones that are out there making sure that this doesn't happen, making sure that we don't hand out any more permits to National Grid, Comcast, or whatever have you, whoever the other companies are, because I don't believe they've removed these double poles on time. They're everywhere. Until I see some changes, I'm not going to vote in favor of it. This one here was out of the ordinary because of the grant that is in jeopardy. If not, this particular item will not be here. I remember I got a phone call a couple of weeks ago about this particular item here. It took me a while for me to put this thing back on here. So we don't take this very lightly when it comes to double poles. This has been an issue. I've been in the city council for five and a half years. It's been an issue for five and a half years. Until we put a stop up until six months ago, nothing comes up until we see a process in place, until they bring at least every month or every other week, letting us know how many double poles they took down. Until we see that, we're gonna keep rejecting these permits, and I hope you bring that message back to your, to your superior. Okay. Counsel Tumi.
Just to address Counsel Rivera's concerns with this, as you mentioned, four, five years ago, we put forth a change in the ordinance that included, any of these people that come in and they have to dig up, they have to get a permit. On the back of the permit, it spells out exactly what they have to do, which includes something, an item called flowable fill, but they also have to take out a bond. Correct? They take out a bond. And if they neglect to do their work within a period of two years, and the city has to do it, then the city can collect on that bond. But there is stipulation in there that they are supposed to use a flowable fill, which kind of hides up like cement, and the only one that I believe that they, they allowed not to do it is the gas company because they have to go around and test, test the street for gas problems. So that's how that works.
Just a quick follow-up. You all set?
All set.
Counsel Rivera.
I think, I have no doubt that that's a fine piece of ordinance. I get concerned that the enforcement's not there. I think that, you know, we, we put these things in place, and then we, then we don't get it enforced. I saw a license application that didn't have the form that we have that's now an affidavit, and everybody's supposed to be using the affidavit form. So I think that we do great work, and I appreciate that you had done that a couple of years back. I just think that we need to check in. I just think that we need to check in and make sure they're actually doing it.
Thank you. Does the motion on the table have been second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Yes, have it. Next item on the agenda is document forty-seven, Handicap Parking, Seventeen Hobson Street. Mr. Clerk? Please read the notice.
Document forty-seven, two thousand thirteen. Notice is hereby given, the city council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May seventh, two thousand thirteen, in City Council Chambers, two hundred Columbus Street, at seven P.M. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendments to the revised ordinances for the city of Lawrence. It's amended by adding the following new paragraph to the handicap parking ordinance to be inserted, Hobson Street, east side, from a point three hundred fifty feet northerly of the intersection of Oregon Ave to a point three hundred seventy feet northerly of the intersection of Oregon Ave. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity.
Public hearing is now open. Anybody wish to be heard? No? Public hearing is now closed. Counselor worship pledge.
Motion to approve.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Yes, have it.
I would like to make a motion to waive the thirty days, please.
Second. All those in favor to waive the thirty days?
Aye. Discussion.
Discussion, Council LaPlante?
I just, I know that we've been doing this out of habit, and I think recently, there was actually a situation where we skipped the thirty days and, and something happened, and we're out of the cab companies, and there wasn't a lot of information that was exchanged because we moved this so quickly. And I think that what we want to do on these emergencies is give it the thirty days of time to breathe on these things, just in case something comes up. I think it's a healthy thing to have happen. I don't mean any disrespect by that, I just, this has been an experience recently that I happened to see, and I just hope that we can not be so eager to have everything waived as a thirty-day obligation. It's, again, it's nothing personal, I just think that that's, I mean, we had something earlier on the Housing Committee, for example, we're about to take something up shortly, and if we moved that as quickly as we were going to, we may not have caught a potential mistake that took place. And so, I'm just concerned about being too hasty. I mean, I hope it goes through, don't get me wrong, I just don't want to have everything go thirty days. I hope you can respect that.
More information? May I ask clarification? How long has this been on the agenda?
About a month.
Forty-seven thirteen, right?
About a month and a half. March fifth?
Council President?
You all set, Council Rivera?
I'm all set.
Council Bernal?
I think Council LaPlante raises a really valid issue that, in many instances, waiving the thirty days is not appropriate, but with the handicap parking in particular, it means that people have already been approved by the state for handicap parking, we're just trying to get a location close to their home, the police officer's been out there. I think of all the situations that'd be the most inclined to waive the thirty days, it would be the handicap parking, but I think Council LaPlante raises a valid point on some other issues.
Council Aquino?
I'm sorry. I was asked by my constituents to waive the thirty days because of the emergency that they have for the parking, and they really have no parking at all right now because all the people there are around, um, park in front of their houses, so it's very urgent, and it's a sixteen-year-old girl that needs the parking, so I will ask you for your cooperation. Thank you.
My last point, that makes sense, that just makes sense to me. I think that what the counselor from District E says makes a lot more sense, just in general on that. So, let's go with that emergency on this one because it does happen, I don't think, for the reasons that make sense on this, but some of the other stop signs and things of that nature that we oftentimes throw up, maybe at that point, we can ease back on some of the emergencies. Thank you.
Just to chime in on that, I don't think we, my personal opinion, I've been in the council, I don't think we ever rush anything. The minimum of one particular item that's on this body is a month and a half, so I don't think a month and a half, it's rushing. I think that we have plenty of time to review these documents. I believe it doesn't take a month and a half for us to review an item, do the researches, make the proper phone calls. I don't think we should wait till last minute to review the item, what is before us. The work is done at the subcommittee level. When it goes to a subcommittee level, that's where everything is done, that's where you do all the researches, that's where you ask all the questions, that's where you table the item, that's where you make phone calls, you send emails, you contact the proper person, and then it goes up to the full council board to find a vote. So, you know, and I respect the council of District F, but we, we don't rush things like you, you know, you make it sound like we do, we don't. Month and a half is more than enough in some cases, and sometimes there are items that we're going to, that needs to be waived the thirty day, a gray sphere. There are items out there sometimes that we need to do that because we have constituents that need it. Sometimes it's our own fault why some of these items are tabled at the subcommittee level, and they're therefore delaying it another month, month and a half. Some of these items stay on the books for six months, and all of a sudden, we take a vote, and we have twenty people knocking on our door saying that we take, why did we took this vote so quick? So, to say that, you know, that we rush things, we don't. Just, all right. So, is the motion on the table, it's been second to waive the thirty days, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Next item on the agenda is communication from Mayor, City official, and City Attorney that's not...
I'm sorry, can we move a couple of items off the, off the agenda? Document number one sixty-six oh nine, and ten thirteen.
I know there's, I know Council Vasquez has an item on appropriation and ordering. I know he has a group of people here, and I believe he wanted to take that one out of order. Yes, Council Vasquez? And I was going to go down to appropriation orders and resolution first, but...
It'd be more effective if you do it, Council Reyes.
Next item on the agenda is appropriation orders and resolution. Council Vasquez, I know you wanted to take document one twenty-six thirteen out of order.
I make that informal motion.
Do I hear a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Yes, have it. Document one twenty-six, resolution of representative and organized labor. This item was submitted by Council Vasquez as a resolution. Council Vasquez?
Thank you, Mr. President. In order to present this resolution, I'm actually going to go to the podium with all respect. Counselors, it is with a great honor that I stand here tonight to present this resolution to organized labor workers. Whereas, unions have historically helped bring economic and social democracy to the American society. Whereas, the city of Lawrence has a history of support for freedom to form unions and the importance to benefit, of the benefits which is inherent to collective bargaining. Whereas, the city of Lawrence continues wishing to promote respect for human rights, including forming unions and bargaining collectively without employer interference, and realizing that failure to protect freedom to form unions is exceeding a heavy health, economic, social, and political price for workers and communities throughout our city, Commonwealth, and nation. Whereas, knowing that protecting the freedom to form union is also vital to public health because union members are far more likely than non-union workers to have adequate health insurance coverage. Because where workers have greater freedom to form unions, more people, union and non-union alike, have effective health and safety programs to resolve hazards in the workplace. Because workplaces where workers have greater freedom to form unions deliver better quality supports, and because protecting freedom to form unions is vital to democracy. Therefore, be it resolved that the Lawrence City Council supports the rights of workers to organize and bargain collectively. Call upon employers to recognize the rights of those who worked for them directly, either directly or indirectly, on their contractual arrangements for services, to be treated with dignity, to be paid a living wage, and to work in a healthy, safe, and secure workplace. Allow their employees to choose freely whether to unionize or not. Abide by their employees' decisions when a majority indicates that it supports union representation, and ensure that the national labor relations for election process will be respected and will not be delayed. Call upon the U.S. Government to amend National Labor Relations Act, to provide for increased penalties for the commission of unfair labor practices. Ensure timely conduct of elections following the filing of representation petitions by relegating issues to the post-elections procedure whenever possible. And to ensure that employers and labor organizations representative have equal access to potential members of a bargaining unit during representation of election campaigns. Call upon the U.S. Government to enforce existing OSHA regulations and increase penalty of OSHA violations. Wherefore, we, the members of the Lawrence City Council, of the city of Lawrence, Massachusetts, cause the seal of the city of Lawrence, Massachusetts, to be affixed here too, in the seventh day of May in this year two thousand and thirteen, and it has been signed by all members of the council. Thank you very much for the support.
Hi. My name... Hold my hand, hold my hand. Hi, my name is Nelson Rivera, fifty-three ul. three. And I'm here today to ask for your support in helping us gain our union where we work at, for the company we work at, because we're working under deplorable conditions. In the last ten, fifteen years, people that have, that worked there, I've been working there two years, I'm a monitor on a transportation van, nobody's got, ever gotten a raise. Of all the people that tell me these stories, and you know, I've been asking people, and everybody tells me they've been there fifteen years, and still making the same money, and the president of the company seems to be the only one making all the money. You know, we always ask for money, they're talking about, there's no funding, there's no funding, there's no money, there's no money. It's not in the budget, it's not in the budget. Everything's not in the budget, but yet, you know, our president is making a pretty nice amount of money for a nonprofit organization. And we're working under unhealthy conditions. The people we work with are, some of them are handicapped, they've got, they got, you know, health issues, they don't tell us about the health issues they have, we get sick, they don't tell us what they have, and it's just so many things. You know, the vans are not washed, they're not sanitized. If they want us to sanitize them, they want us to go in our pocket and buy the stuff. We ask them for stuff, they always say they don't have windshield washing fluid in the window, on the, on the windshields, riding in the snow, they tell us to pull over and grab some snow and put it on the windshield so we could see, it's ridiculous. I brought this to my supervisor, and she told me that I was being insubordinate to get out of her office, but yet, they tell us that they, you know, that they respect us and that we should come with our complaints to them, but yet, nothing is done, and all these years, nothing's ever been done. Now that we're trying to form a union, they got these union busters that are coming in there and trying to tell us that it's no good, we should vote no, this, that, and the third, they're trying to hand our gloves now, giving us paper towels. It's just too little, too late. So, we just want, know if we could have your support in this issue.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Liz Parrilla. I'm sorry, I can't watch. I am one of those, esta ejemplo. Yo soy víctima del abuso. De, yo tengo rage, and then ellos no, I'm sorry. Ellos no quieren decir quiénes están infectados, quienes no están infectados. Ahora mismo yo estoy trayendo bacterias para mi casa, y no es justo. No es justo que ellos pongan a mi familia en riesgo mientras ellos se están, mientras ellos no nos dan a nosotros la seguridad. Eso es lo que nosotros creemos. Seguridad, queremos igualdad, queremos que nuestros derechos se escuchen. No es justo lo que yo estoy pasando y que mis compañeros estén pasando. Gracias.
Just to translate what she said, so that everybody understands, she's saying that under the HIPAA Act, they are not allowed to disclose any type of disease or any type of infectious disease that their clients may have when they go to care for these people whom, these are basically simple servants that are hired by these companies to come and take care of people in their homes who are, who are suffering from Alzheimer's, dementia. They get hit on, abused on, they go into apartments where, and I know this for, for a fact, I have two family members who work with SEIU, she's, my mom is a personal care attendant, and there's all kinds of things, like when they have pets, that they, some of these people want you to come in and clean their homes, you know, to a certain, they have certain levels that they want you to do for them, but they're, they're not getting compensated for, for what they're getting done. Like I said, because of the HIPAA Act, there's a lot of diseases that they cannot be told of, and it is very unfair that you don't know what you're running into in these homes. And they, being the civil servants and coming to take care of these people, can bring home these diseases to their children, to their family members. And for us to not, for them not to have that support, and to sit here today and listen that not even their vans are sanitized, that's, that's something above and beyond that I, I didn't know. I was thinking that maybe since these corporations own these types of vehicles, that inspections are done so that this doesn't happen, but obviously, this isn't one of the steps that's being taken to secure the health and well-being, not only of you as an employee, but of other clients that get into these vehicles and these diseases. A lot of these people have low immune systems and can catch diseases a lot quicker than others, so maybe they're transferring all these diseases to one another also through these vehicles. And you think of the, the chairs that are, that are used for them to be accessible, to be able to move around, these chairs are probably also not sanitized and et cetera. So, it is a health issue, not only for the people who are trying to get services, but also for the people who are trying to provide services to the people who need them. So, thank you so much for being a part of the caring system and the hands that love and the hearts that are willing to, want to continue even under these conditions, and anything that I personally can do to continue to help push. But tonight, we have all signed this resolution, which says that we want to be part of helping this, this collaborative come together. So, thank you for being there. Don't go away.
Good evening, Mr. President, and the rest of the council. My name is Francisco Brea. I live in eighty-five Colonial Road, and I just want to let you know that very recently, I did some research on this company, and they announced how well, how beautiful they doing it. But again, they don't, they don't say what these people going through. Last week, they came to our council, the Mary Mac Valley Center Labor Council, and they give us pretty much the same story that you hear today. Unanimously, we support it, and we endorse it, and we expect that you do the same thing tonight, because these people want to work, they don't want to hang out. And what they want is work and make possible to bring to the table the food that they deserve for the family. So, I appreciate your time, and I congratulate you to be, you know, to be, to be so encouraged to do what you're doing, and keep doing it, because only fight make you where you're going to be tomorrow, all the way up, okay? Thank you.
Council LaPlante, I know you wanted to take something out of order.
Second?
I'm not sure which one it is. What do you want to take out of order, Council LaPlante?
One sixty-six nine.
It's the document that we can take as a block, is one six...
Is it going to the same person?
Uh, no, actually, no.
All right, let's do one at a time.
It's coming from the same committee.
All right, one at a time.
Okay.
Which one?
One sixty-six oh nine.
Need a motion to take document one sixty-six oh nine out of order?
So, move?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Yes, have it. Document one sixty-six oh nine, disposition thirty-two Cedar Street, tax map one sixty-eight, lot one forty-two A, to be sold to Johnny Castillo for three thousand two hundred and fourteen. This item came out from the Housing Committee. Mr. Chair from the Housing Committee?
The Housing Committee, by unanimous vote, supported document one sixty-six oh nine, which is a thirty-two Cedar Street, tax map one sixty-eight, lot one forty-two A, sell this property to Mr. Johnny Castillo for the sum of three thousand two hundred and fourteen dollars, under the attached conditions that are listed in the packet, and make that in the form of a motion.
Will I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Discussion.
Council Bernal?
Thank you, Council President. I support this sale, and I think it's a good thing, and I support the yard sale program in general. I just want to address a comment that was made earlier this evening by Mr. Russell, who I think raises a really valid point, and I just want to take it to the next level to help explain why we do this. We take a vacant lot, the average vacant lot is between two and three thousand square feet, we don't want those built upon. We put them into a yard sale program and we sell them at a dollar a square foot because it gets the yard utilized and it cleans up a vacant lot. But at the same time, once it's sold to the butter, it gets merged with their lot and it gets reassessed at the full tax fair market value. So he won't get taxed at three thousand dollars, he will get taxed at the fair market value of the lot. The value of that lot will increase substantially after he buys it and the city's tax rolls will increase exponentially because we gave that lot away at a dollar a square foot, was vacant untaxed land, now we'll get taxed at the full fair market value. So just because the sale price today is three thousand dollars, that's not the fair market value and that's not what the tax assessed value will be. So just want to make sure people are clear on that point. They do get a one-time break at the purchase, they're doing the city a favor at that point by getting it cleaned up and getting it back on the tax rolls, but once that happens, they get taxed at the fair market value. I just want to make sure people know that. Thank you.
Anybody else? Counsel of Toomey.
Just a question, is, if I understand, Counsel Bernal, you, you would combine the two lots together, is that, is that the way this would work?
When they buy the lot, if the, if you have two adjacent lots and you hold title in the exact same name, by state statute, your lots merge automatically. So they're not supposed to be separating that lot off. We, we transfer to them with a deed restriction that prevents them from building on it, the deed restriction runs with the land, allows it only for plantings, grass, or parking. So there's a deed restriction that they can't build on, it has to be a yard. But by law, their lot will merge. The city attorney makes them take title in the exact same name. Sometimes we've had people come back and we amended because the name wasn't, how we approved it wasn't lining up exactly what they were joining deed. So once those two joining lots are in the exact same name, there's a merger statute and that will cause those two tax assessed lots to become one.
It's by law, so it's, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Is this the, are we selling this property to a butter?
Yes.
It is, okay. There's a motion, anybody else?
Just by law, these yard sales are for butters only.
Okay. There's a motion to take, it's been second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And the next document is-
Ayes have it.
Yes.
Which one's the other document?
Ten, thirteen.
Document thirteen, where's that?
Next one.
Is it ten or thirteen?
Ten.
Oh, ten, oh.
Yeah.
Looking for a motion to take document ten out of order?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, document ten, disposition forty-six Utes Street Tax Map one thirty, Lot thirty-six. Property to be sold to Linda Pulling for three thousand one hundred and seven. Mr. Chair from the Housing Committee?
House Committee voted by unanimous vote to support and endorse this sale to Linda Pulling for the price of thirty-one oh seven at the address that was just listed by the council president with, with the restrictions that were included inside the packet. Make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Here's second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Next item, we're going back up in order. Actually, Counsel, this, one item, and I know, and I know the chief is here, chief, I'll get you off in a minute. I have an item here from Lazarus House, and I know they're here, I believe they're here, and I'd like to see if we can suspend the rules and take this item as an emergency because of time sensitive. Their event is on May sixteen and the city council won't meet till May twenty-first. I'm looking for a motion to suspend the rules and take this item as an emergency, document one twenty dash thirteen.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, document one twenty. Lazarus House Minister requests permission to close Hampshire Street for a religious candlelight procession on Thursday, May sixteen, from seven PM to seven-thirty PM, is that right?
That's correct. Thank you.
Item was submitted by Bridget Shaheen, Executive Director.
Thank you, yes, this is, we're very sorry-
Name and address, please.
Oh, so I'm here on behalf of Lazarus House at four twelve Hampshire Street. And we're very sorry to be late on this, it's our first thirtieth. So we're looking to, exactly what you said, from seven to seven-thirty on the sixteenth of May, that's a Thursday, we're looking for a procession permit.
What's the speaker's name, Counsel President?
I'm Maureen, Maureen Burns Bertha, I'm sorry.
Maureen?
Maureen.
Okay, thank you.
Just looking for your, the paperwork, this big package.
To you, Mr. President.
Counsel Vasquez?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for coming before us to request this permission. As a counselor for that district, I actually live on that street. And I see, just for clarification purposes, so you're looking to close from the intersection of Hampshire and Park Street?
Um, yes.
Central Catholic, which will be just past Irving F?
I, you know what, I'm so sorry, I don't know.
Okay, so-
So it would start at, at the Saint Joseph's Church and, and finish at Central Catholic, where we hold the reception.
Okay. Is this the first time that we're doing this?
We are, yes, it's our thirtieth and-
There's only thirty once.
There are only thirty once.
I'm sorry?
But, and I'm sure we'll do other ones and we, we will absolutely respect the thirty day. It was an oversight. Actually, I'm new.
We still, we're still going to need the, the whole package. So if we take a vote today, it's going to be subject to approval.
Okay.
Because we have to review the paperwork that you were supposed to submit to us.
I believe it was sent in to, it was brought in, we delivered it to the town.
Do you, do you remember the person you hand out the paperwork to?
Um, no, but I can find out-
Was it Nelson Ortiz, down on the first floor, down in the basement?
I'm so sorry, it wasn't me that delivered it, but I can call that person and find out before-
It's going to be subject for us to review on this paperwork.
Certainly.
Are residents in that particular street going to be notified?
Oh, that's a good question. I believe that, I mean, everybody's welcome and we're, we're putting out flyers and inviting the entire neighborhood. And it's a free event and we're, we're asking everybody to join us in the celebration.
I support it, my, my concern is just notifying the residents to let them know that if they need to make any adjustments to their personal schedule in this particular time.
Is there a certain protocol that you suggest of how we go about that?
I will knock on doors.
Okay.
Approximately, I will do it as soon as possible, you know.
We will do that.
Because the process already started today.
Yes.
So I, I think that it would be wise to notify them as soon as possible, so-
Well, not only are we notifying, we want to invite them, so we can do that, that'd be wonderful.
So it will serve as both, you know, two purposes at once.
Thank you.
I personally, I feel comfortable as a counselor for that area. But like Counselor President Moran mentioned, it will be pending all the documentation and making sure that everything is in order.
Thank you. So just clear that we're looking for a packet that should have been, because I'm going to get the information on the phone and I'll wait till-
I'm going to give you the forms and I'm going to write on each one where you should get them from.
Okay.
So I'm going to give you these-
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Please join us if you can pull the file.
Anybody else? I'm looking for a motion, a motion to approve, subject to review and approval.
Second, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, thank you. All right, we'll go back up in order. Next item in the agenda is appropriation, orders and resolution, document ninety-nine, appropriation transfer, police department, from the police, operation budgets from salaries and wages for thirteen thousand fifty-eight dollars to additional equipment for four thousand nine hundred and six, into motor vehicles for eight thousand one hundred and fifty-two. This item came out from the Budget and Finance Committee, Mr. Chair from the Budget and Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. This item was before the Budget and Finance Committee was set up with a favorable recommendation and do that as a form of a motion.
Well, here's second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Discussion. Just like to have the chief explain to us what we-
Yes, good evening, Council Chief John Romero, Chief of the Police, Lawrence, City of Lawrence. Yes, we're requesting to replace one of our vehicles, which was totaled, one of the vehicles we purchased last year. We, the insurance company paid out sixteen thousand dollars. We need another additional thirteen in order to outfit a new vehicle to replace the one that was totaled. The reason where we, we had money in, in personnel was, we were hiring three officers in this, in this particular budget. We hired the three officers, but because they were with other departments, two of them had been previously Lawrence Police Officers, who had gone to another department when the layoffs came. Another was a North Andover Police Officer, they had to give notice to their agency if they just couldn't leave the next day, in which case, we were able to save enough money, we believe, to be able to transfer to this. Also, we're, you know, we're looking at our overtime, we're right on budget, barring any major, major catastrophe in the next eight weeks, we believe, budget-wise, with overtime, we're going to be right where we should be, so.
Counsel Magr?
That was it and there is, I'd like to amend the motion, we also waited thirty days.
Second.
To you, Mr. President.
Counsel Vasquez?
Actually, I just want to make a clarification, with all the respect, Mr. Chief. He had said that the insurance settlement was sixteen thousand and in reality, it's almost nineteen thousand.
Nineteen.
Just wanted to make that correction.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yep, just a-
Counsel Bernal?
We also had some supporting documentation about the value of the disposed vehicles, so that we knew it wasn't just the-
Right.
That's what it was worth.
Insurance adjusters-
Made the recommendation.
Anybody else? No? There's a motion to take, it's been second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next item in the agenda is document one hundred, appropriation transfer, police department from police operation, salaries and wages to additional equipment for sixty-four thousand dollars. This item came out from the Budget and Finance Committee, Mr. Chair from the Budget and Finance.
This item was before the Budget and Finance Committee and was sent up with a unanimous favorable recommendation. I do that as a form of motion and also to wait the thirty days.
So here's second. Any discussion?
Discussion.
Counsel Rivera?
Just have, just the chief to discuss.
If I may, I, at the last, at the budget meeting, you requested, what does that entail? I have a document I can pass out to counselors that any gate would deserve. This is to upgrade our crime management system and, and recording, we've never updated it. We would have liked if this had been a capital improvement item, but the reality is, we need it right now. And we have enough in our budget, we believe, to be able to transfer money from personnel in order to, you know, to accommodate this, the purchase of this update.
So just for the record, Counsel President, this is an, an update to the, the software that they use to enter data on crime, track crime, and to report on that, both for tactical and for grant writing purposes.
Right, this was not in the budget for two thousand thirteen, but given the fact we need it, and you can see all the different items that we'll be able to do now with the update that we weren't able to, we're not able to do right now, we will be able to do with the updates. And it involves crime tracking for detectives, motor vehicle accidents, we'll be able to track, send it right to the registry, crime web, document tracking, evidence, property, dispatching, it impacts just about every area of our, of our management system.
Counsel La Plana?
Whenever I see the chief, Counsel President, I just seeing him reminds me of the fact that we have at least three police officers that we're paying that, that are not actually working for the city. I, you know, right now, we're at month six or seven since some of the indictments have come down, and we're still paying individuals. And, you know, we're making these kind of appropriation transfers and, and they're for good reasons and I'm, I'm glad I'm supporting these transfers. But it, you know, when I, when I see these transfers taking place, I wonder what is being done to try to ensure that, that we have, that the money that we're spending in the police department is being spent appropriately. And when we're spending money for people who aren't working, I always question as to whether or not that's truly a good way to be spending taxpayer money. And so it's more of a commentary, but if we go around to this next year and these individuals that are indicted are found to be guilty, we have no recourse and that money is lost. If they're found to be, if, if they were suspended without pay, we would have that money. Essentially, we have the ability, the mayor has the ability to hold that money and carry it over to next year's budget, he does not require to spend it. But these kinds of things could take place and we could be funded quite easily next year and other things that are important to the police department. And so when I see the, the chief, it reminds me that there are other issues here that yet to be addressed, through no fault of the chief, I might add. And I don't want to put him in a tough spot and it's not, this is not him speaking, it's me speaking. And I just, it's, it's very, it's beyond unfortunate that we're put in this position. I also want to ask the, the author of the amendment, I just had a comment earlier about emergencies, can we describe what the emergencies and why, could this wait thirty days or we need this right now?
Well, if we want to get into this budget, we need to do it right away and wait the thirty days, so it, though it appears in the two thousand thirteen budget.
Okay. That just needs to be said, and it wasn't earlier, thank you.
Anybody else? Counsel Vasquez?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, receiving this documentation today from the chief is great because there's one item that I had placed on the agenda a few months ago, that deals specifically with the dispatching, which is a three-one-one service. So I hope that it could be implemented somehow in, in, into this new program. And there was another item that is on this agenda, submitted by myself, Counselor Almonte, Counselor Arquino, and Counselor Reyes, which is the City Crime and Statistic Report Map, to be able to implement something similar. I know that this will do it for, you know, the detectives and the court persecutors and, you know, any other agencies that, that work, you know, with, with this incident management reporting system. But I think that it will be also be helpful for the community to know where incidents are happening. And that's what the, the other document will address. So I don't know if we're early on the stage of discussing that, I know that it's a different document, but, you know, I just wanted to, to bring that up, which is something that counselors here have also thought about. And I think this is a great initiative that, that has been taken. Thank you, Chief.
Anybody else?
Just a last piece of that, do we have updated crime statistics that are available to us?
What we do is, if any counselor, or I'm attending a community meeting, which I do on a regular basis, we'll bring the crime for the, for the entire month, for that month, for the entire city and what happened in that particular area as well, so we can compare that. The mayor added a number of hours for John Reynolds, additional hours, and he's been putting on a map now, any counselor who wants to contact John Reynolds and wants to know a particular area or if they're going to a community meeting or some, meeting with some group of people, John can provide a map with the crime numbers for the city for the entire month in those seven categories and what happened in that particular neighborhood in those seven categories as well.
Thanks. Anybody else?
I think that the proposal offered by Counsel Arquino, Counselor Reyes, and myself goes a little-
Yeah, it goes a little further, you're looking, there is a system out there, it costs money that will put up all the crime, it also has, where people can call in tips by pointing to a particular crime number, for instance, if a particular robbery is identified as four-seven-three, they can call in a tip on four-seven-three, they can do it on a computer. We're looking at that, but again, it's, you have to sign a contract, I think, for three years and it's, it's not, I'd say it's a substantial amount of money, but it is something we probably need to look at because it gets the public involved in what's going on. If they can look at those crimes and say, gee, I have some information on that particular crime, let me, let me send that into the police, and they can do that as well. We're also looking at getting the, the tip line. I know Art on a Grant, on the youth grant, is now looking to, to install the tip line as well. So we're looking at a lot of ways using technology now to kind of improve the service we can provide to people and, and at the same time, get information from the public as well.
Wonderful. Chief, have you gotten a call from the Mary Mac Valley Planning Commission? They're working on a regional system, a three-one-one type of system, that'll take care of a lot of those calls.
I have-
They're working on something like this, it's going to be regionalized for the Mary Mac Valley.
That would be a great idea, we would support something like that, it's an excellent program.
Anybody else? There's a motion to take, it's been second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you, Counselors.
Thank you.
Next item in the agenda is document one twenty-five, appropriation transfer from fire department salaries and wages to motor vehicle for seventy-seven thousand four hundred and eighty-seven, submitted by Mark J. Anello, Budget and Finance Director, is going now to the Budget and Finance Committee. Next item in the agenda is Committee Report, document sixty-six, Handicap Parking, Seven Wilmont Street. This item came out from the Orders Committee to order public hearing, Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counsel President. On April eighteenth, the Ordinance Committee met, and we reviewed this petition for handicap parking at seven Walmart Street. The applicant did have a placard on file, and the officer was able to go out and measure the spot. There was an appropriate location there. It came up from the subcommittee with a unanimous favorable recommendation to order a public hearing in any requisite language from the city attorney, and I make that in the form of a motion.
Right here, second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, DA seven. Next item on the agenda is document ninety-two Iglesia de la Fensole is increased, so request permission to use the William Kennedy Park on Daisy Street on Saturday, July sixth, from three P M. to six P M. for a Christian event. This item came out from the Ordinance Committee. Madam Chair, from the Ordinance.
Counsel President.
Take it for as a block.
Madam Chair, go ahead.
Thank you, Counsel President. I was just going to suggest the documents ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, and ninety-seven all relate to the same applicant, so if possible, I was going to ask if we could take those as a block.
Absolutely. Is that in form of a motion, Madam Chair?
Make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
All those in favor, take it as a block, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, DA seven. Document ninety-two Iglesia, we already set the date, it's July sixth from three P M. to six P M. to use the Kennedy Park on Saturday, July twentieth, and September fourteen to use the Sullivan Park from three P M. to six P M. Document ninety-four, request permission to use the West Street Park on Saturday, August third, from three P M. to six P M., and to use the Camper John Common Park on June twenty Saturday, June twenty-second, from three P M. to six P M., and to use the Storil Park on Saturday, August thirty-first, from three P M. to six P M. And document ninety-seven, request permission to use the Cronin Park on Saturday, June eighth, August seventeen, and September twenty-eighth, from three P M. to six P M. All these items came out from the Ordinance Committee. Madam Chair, from the Ordinance.
Thank you, Counsel President. All these items relate to the same individual who is doing some, it's different than the usual evangelical celebrations that we often let the parks be used for, where there's a congregation worshiping together. This is an individual who is doing some evangelization, and he is using a microphone, so he does need permission to use the megaphone, so that's why he's before us. But it really is more of a one-to-one individual kind of thing. So there's not a situation where there's setup or breakdown, or pre-prep or post-prep kind of stuff. But it did come up from the subcommittee with unanimous favorable recommendation to allow all those uses, and I do make that in the form of a motion.
Right here, second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, DA seven. Next item on the agenda is old business, document three oh, actually, Counsel, if I want to be able to take all these items as a block from document three oh six, seventy-four, seventy, let's see, seventy-four, seventy-six, one eighty-five, one eighty-nine, one eighty-eight, one eighty-nine, one ninety-two, one ninety-nine, all as a block. Right here, second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, DA seven. I like to take, I'm going to send document, all these documents down to the Housing Committee, and I'm going to read what they are, so everybody at home knows what they are. There's a surplus property in twenty-six dash thirty Milford Street, one thirty-two Union Street, one fifty-four, one fifty-six Union Street, Riverside Drive, tax map, two twenty-five Lot ninety-two, two forty-six Lawrence Street, seventy-seven Spruce Street, seventy-nine eighty-one Spruce Street, and Thornton Street, tax map, fifty-three Lot seven, and one thirty-two Union Street. Document fifty-five dash twelve appropriation, repurpose the balance of eight hundred and two thousand one hundred and seven fourteen cents. Water retained earnings from water and sewer expenditures for one point three, one million three hundred and ninety thousand four hundred and ninety-eight for sewer repairs. This item was submitted by our acting TPW Director, John Isensis, going down to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document two ninety-two dash twelve, operation of taxi and delivery vehicles in Lawrence. This is an old business. Counselor, I know this, I'm probably just tired of looking at the same document more than once, but there was an item here, this is an ordinance that was passed about a month ago, and there's a word in there that says seize the car, which to me means tow, but the police department asks for help for us to, instead of just, to add tow. I believe the word seize should, small enough, but I think they want, they want us to say tow. So the only difference is to add tow to that particular item. And I just, we got to order a public hearing, and I'm looking for a motion to order a public hearing on this particular document, document two ninety-two dash twelve.
So move.
Right here, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, DA seven.
President, point of inquiry.
Point of inquiry.
These are all old business items, right? That must have been that they had come before the Counsel at one point or another, in, in what, table?
They did before, correct.
Were they tabled at the Counsel level, or how would they get into old business?
Well, these are, if you look at some of these numbers, I mean, they go back.
To oh nine.
Oh nine, oh five, ten, twelve. This is the same, this is a question that I always had too. Why do we bring it back, instead of bringing it back as a new business? Why do we have to bring it back as an old business? The reason why they do old business is because we're discussed before, we talked about it, and it was declared surplus at one time.
Well, I'm just, I'm looking at this appropriations for the water retaining earnings thing here.
Well, I think the reason for that one, trying to read, because I, I had a conversation this morning about this particular item, fifty-five twelve. It's going to be reallocation. They're going to reallocate some of the money somewhere else, and I want to make sure that it goes back to the sub, to the committee level, to make sure that we ask the right question, the detail, where it's going, the atomized detail.
So it's, it's changed from what it was originally?
Yeah. It's going to be reallocated to something else.
Just a follow-up on that question.
Yeah.
So it's not a new appropriation, it's a reuse of.
It's a re, correct.
But, or.
So it's going to be reallocated to, it's the same amount of money, it's no different, it's not less, it's not more. It just, the purpose was changed. So that's the reason why I'm sending it down to the subcommittee, so we can get all the detail.
On the document two ninety-two twelve, the tax cabs, is, what is, what are we going to have a public hearing on?
Well, as you know, if we want, it's, it's an amendment to the current ordinance, that's what it is. We're just going to add a word to it where it says seize right next to it, we want to add tow.
So the language that's in here, I think we already had a vote on, we're going to be voting for this whole thing again with just, with that change?
With just that change.
So everything's going to be revoted?
Everything's going to be revoted, yeah. Just to add that particular language.
Sure. Is there some way to get some clarification in the language as well to figure out, it's, because there's some questions regarding, can somebody from Lawrence call someone from outside? If they don't call, can they pick, can they drive around? I know that's a simple one, they can't pick up anybody that's driving around. I mean, that, that, they can't drive around and pick up somebody. But what happens if they're coming from Logan Airport and they're dropping someone off?
They could do that.
So I, we just, I think that there's still some confusion that I'm hearing, and that would be helpful if we can have the ordinance be clearer on those things.
I get the email that you get, which I think we all get the same email. Based on the conversation that I had with the police department, because I don't think that, I hope the police department's not lying to us. We had a meeting with them about a week, I believe Counsel Bernal and I had a meeting with Lieutenant Conway about a week ago, and we talked about some of these issues that are going on, these emails that we get, because, you know, we want to find out whether some of these emails that are coming to us, you want to respond to these people that are sending it to you. So according to them, they follow, you know, that they're, it's no secret, you're driving to City of Lawrence, you bump into ten of them the same day. Come on, let's, let's be honest. So, I mean, the police department, they're very smart, they know what they're doing, they see the same person all day in the city, so that's what they do as a police officer. If you feel something's wrong, you're going to investigate. So that's what they do. They investigate, they looked at a person the same day, all day, in the city. That means this person's not leaving the city, and he's, you know, traveling, you know, violating our current city ordinance, so they follow them. And a little aside, once they follow them, they stop them, this person gives them an all different story. Oh, I came from, when the police officer clearly saw them, where they picked up, where they dropped off, where they go around, something like this. But we hear something different based on the emails that we get. I believe, you know, I believe the Lawrence PD.
Don't they have, they don't, don't they have to have documentation as to, within the cabs, talks if they're going to pick somebody up or bring them someplace else?
This is different. Yeah, that's two different types. That was the old ordinance, this is different.
No, Counsel Tumi, just by point of information, Counsel Tumi is accurate, that all cabs in the city, and all cabs in the state have a log. The driver's supposed to log every single passenger that gets in his vehicle when they get in. So if I, if it's.
Isn't that the liberty? It's different.
Nope.
Taxi and livery is different.
Taxi and livery is different, and, and livery is by contract. You have to have a pre-arranged contractual, a cab, you have to be logged, you know, I pick you up on a, whatever you call it.
A flag.
Thank you, flag down. They're supposed to log those also, that it was a flag down versus a phone call, they're supposed to have the number in there. So the calls are all, in any cab, it's supposed to be logged, they're supposed to keep a log. So yes, you are accurate that all the cabs are supposed to be logged. So that helps with some aspect of the issue, but at the same time, when a police officer sees a flag down from an out of town cab, that would be in direct violation of the ordinance, pulls the cab over, the, the passenger says, yes, you are right, officer, he did just flag me down. The officer seizes the vehicle, then later that same day, it's the same exact driver doing a flag down where the, again, the passenger verifies, yes, officer, he was flagging us down. This is bold. Like, it's just, I, I think we need to give the police department the teeth that they think that they want, and it just seems that the, the level of disregard for the current ordinance is outrageous. So I, I think what we need to do is to support the police department, and I think making that modification at their request will help.
So motion on the table has been second to order a public hearing, actually, we're already ordered a public hearing. That's to order a public hearing. All right, next item on the agenda.
Table manners.
Let's see, table manners. No business, document one oh seven, old gold dealer license, Adagio Flores, nine Broadway, going to the Ordinance Committee. Document one oh eight, Assembly of Christian Church, request permission to use the Camper John Park on July sixth from two P M. to five P M., submitted by Juan Perez, same church, which is document one oh nine. Request permission to use the Camper John Park on August tenth from two P M. to five P M. Thank you. For some particular reason, I had it already said. Counsel, I'm looking for, to take document one oh two, one oh three, one oh four, one oh five, and one oh six as a block to send it to the Ordinance Committee.
So move.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, DA seven. Iglesia Almonte, the Order, request permission to use the Ocano on June eighth from three P M. to six P M. They also want to use the Cronin Park on June twenty-second from three P M. to six P M. They want to use the Sullivan Park on July sixth from three P M. to six P M. They also want to use the Kennedy Park on July twentieth from three P M. to six P M. They want to use the Cronin Park again on August third from three P M. to six P M. All these items are going down to the Ordinance Committee. I read that one oh seven, one oh eight. Document one oh nine, Assembly of Christian Church, request permission to use the Camper John Park to hold religious services on August tenth from two P M. to five P M., submitted by Juan Perez, going down to the Ordinance. Document one ten, Ministerio en Monte de Azus, request permission to use the Camper John Park for religious services on July twenty-seventh, August twenty-fourth, September seventh from two P M. to six P M., submitted by Pastor Jose Salinas, going down to the Ordinance. Document one eleven, parking fifty-four Union Street, two twenty-minute spaces, submitted by Counsel Reyes, going down to the Ordinance Committee. Document one twelve, medallion and licenses for cabs, submitted by Counsel LaPlante, going down to the Ordinance Committee. Document one thirteen, transfer rental license, four ninety Hampshire Street, submitted by Angel Almonte, going down to the Ordinance Committee. Document one fourteen, City Crime Statistic Report and Map Implementation. Counsel Rivera, is that, I mean, Counsel Rivera, Counsel Vasquez, just looking to set up an ordinance, is that what you're looking for?
Um, yes.
Okay, it's going down to the Ordinance Committee. Document, let's see, document one fifteen, old gold dealer license, four forty-two Essex Street, Benkees Oslings, going down to the Ordinance Committee. Document one sixteen, neighborhood block party, intersection of Essex and Smith Street, for January, for Saturday, June twenty-second, from ten thirty A M. to two thirty P M., submitted by Maggie Superchurch, going down to the Ordinance Committee. Document one seventeen, handicap parking, one twelve Springfield Street, submitted by Orniere Garcia, going down to the Ordinance Committee. Document one eighteen, Big City Grill, request permission to use the Pemberton Park to broadcast an event for car and sound enthusiasts on May nineteen, and every other Sunday through September twenty-second from one P M. to eight P M., submitted by Marino Almonte, is going down to the Ordinance Committee. Document one nineteen, Merrimack Valley Habitat for Humanity and YMCA, request permission to use the Camper John Park for the Brickman Threitalon on Sunday, September twenty-nine from six A M. to one P M., submitted by Gerald Pulli. Next item on the agenda is document one twenty-one, Phantom Night, request permission to use the Pemberton Park for their first annual bike and car wash to benefit diabetes or whiners on July twenty-seventh from eleven A M. to six P M., submitted by Luis Rios. It's going down to the Ordinance Committee. Document one twenty-two, review and acceptance of grants awarded to City of Lawrence Community Development Department for site remediation for one hundred and thirty-five thousand fifteen dollars, submitted by James H. Barnes, Community Development Director. It's going down to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document one twenty-three, transfer rental license, eighty-nine Saratoga Street, submitted by Antonio Parra, it's going down to the Ordinance Committee. Document one twenty-four, Community Choice Aggregate Program, submitted by Mayor William Montego, it's going down to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document one twenty-seven, handicap parking, twelve Boston Street, submitted by Fernandez Mercedes, via Counsel Vasquez, it's going down to the Ordinance Committee. Document one twenty-eight, transfer rental license, seventy-three Main Street, submitted by Carmen Byes, it's going down to the Ordinance Committee. Document one twenty-nine, Conquer Street, into Broadway, right turn early, submitted by Counsel Almonte, it's going down to the Ordinance Committee. Document one thirty, local musicians for ordinance, submitted by Counsel Vice Chair, it's going down to the Ordinance Committee. Document one thirty-one, Baldwin and South Baldwin, World War Two G I. Home Historical Market and Historical Recognition, submitted by Counsel Vice Chair, Counsel Rivera, it's going down to the Ordinance Committee. Counsel, there's one item that I want to add. The gentle lady from Mount Vernon Street asked for us to take an item, to suspend the rules and take an item, and actually add it to the agenda, so I can send it to the Ordinance Committee, is a handicap parking for eight West Kenneth Street. Looking for a motion to suspend the rules and add to the agenda?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.[1719.83]